All right. We will call this meeting of the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency in session. Would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Malpe, do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
One change this evening, Mr. Mayor, and if you can either help me out or bear with me, as I'm just getting my agenda opened here. It is 8I, I believe? No. F. The Britton Avenue Whiting. The staff would like to pull that off tonight's agenda and we'll bring it back to you at the next council meeting.
Consider it pulled and if you need to do those things faster, the paper copies work.
Yeah. Mr. Malpe, I have it.
And Mr. Gasilli can show you how to use them if you're confused. All right. I will mention, well, we'll deal with that when we get to there. We had no closed session tonight, so there is no report from closed session. Council Communications and Announcements. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things to report today. So I had the privilege of joining a number of my colleagues at the Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year banquet on Friday night, where the Chamber honored former school board president Beth Hunkapiller for her commitment to education, her philanthropic efforts, et cetera. It was a great event that was well-attended. The Chamber also gave awards to Spasso Restaurant as the San Carlos Business of the Year and to a number of Chamber volunteers. I also had the privilege of joining a number of my colleagues at the Burton Park ribbon-cutting on Saturday, where we officially kicked off the opening of, or we officially opened the Burton Park Phase Two project, which included new bocce ball courts, new basketball courts, and a new stage. That was a great event. One thing that's important to me in particular is making sure that young people have lots of great opportunities, great activities in San Carlos, and I had an opportunity to attend two different examples of that. Last week, I attended the monthly 4H meeting for the San Carlos 4H Club, which actually spans into Redwood City and Menlo Park, which was held at Clifford School. It was a great meeting. It's an agendized public meeting that's run through parliamentary procedure, but it's run entirely by the kids, and it's a great example of leadership development, and they're doing some really fun projects. And then on Saturday, I took my daughter to see the San Carlos Children's Theater production of The Little Mermaid, which was great. It was a joint production of Terre Linda, Central, and Charter, all under the organization of San Carlos Children's Theater. It was a great production. My daughter has not stopped talking about it. And then two final things I would mention. I chair a county commission that oversees mental health, substance abuse, and recovery for San Mateo County. We had our monthly meeting last week and, or the week before last. And one of the activities that we did this month was we did our annual Hall of Fame Awards, where we give out awards to members of the community who've struggled with mental health and substance abuse issues and have made considerable strides in their recovery. And it's always a very moving and inspirational event that makes you recognize that there are a lot of people in our community that do struggle with these issues, and it's very inspirational when you see people take huge strides towards pulling their lives back together. The last thing I would say is that I'm glad to see our colleague, Mr. Grocott, back from the flu. One thing that I did this past weekend was get a flu shot, and the flu has been particularly bad this year. There have unfortunately been a number of tragic deaths in San Mateo County, including some young children who've died of the flu this year. So I would encourage anybody here who's watching to get a flu shot. It's definitely not too late. I got mine at Walgreens down on El Camino. They have them at CBS. They have them at your doctor's office. So, thank you.
Mr. Grocott.
Well, Mr. Johnson's right. I've spent most of this month being sick with the flu or hanging-ons of it. Still have a little bit going through tonight, as a matter of fact, but I'm here, and I did manage to make it to the first meeting I could attend this month, and that was the San Carlos, Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department Board meeting. And just to let the public know and the council know, we had just one agenda item, and it had to do with adjusting the budget, which was necessary because when the budget was made, CalPERS still had not given us a full rendition of what our commitment needed to be on our payments. And even though I know Thomasville had tried to get them to come forth with those figures, but it did not happen, and now that those figures have come forward, it looks like what we budgeted was not sufficient to cover it. And so we'll be seeing a future agenda item on our council agenda to OK the increase in monies to cover what is going to be owed for our CalPERS payment this year. Other than that, there was another item that I wanted to mention. As far back as, I think it was October, I was contacted by a resident who lives on, I believe it's Euclidus, and he's a gentleman who went through a period, through an event with the city when we were putting in new trees, and shortly after that, we changed our ordinance on who's responsible for trees and sidewalks in front of homes. His situation is he's having trouble with the trees that were planted ruining his lawn and ruining the sidewalks, and so he has a situation that he was appealing to the city to help him out with that. He's on a fixed income. He's 80 years old and retired. The reason I tell that story is because he talked to me, I sent him to staff, he went through the Public Works Director, then he went and talked to the city manager, and he's still at the same place he was before, which is trees that are damaging his lawn and the sidewalks in front of his house. He'd like the trees removed. He can't really afford to either to remove them, repair the sidewalk, and he's not happy about his lawn. So the reason I bring all that up is I know he's going to be coming to the council to talk to us, but I think aside from that, I would like to see us bring our tree ordinance and our sidewalk ordinance to the dais for discussion, particularly for, I don't think there's something, anything we would do necessarily on this globally, all over San Carlos, but it does seem to me there are people who got caught in the middle between the time we changed the ordinance and the time that, well, actually, between the time that we put in new trees and required that and then changed the ordinance where we gave the responsibility for those trees to the homeowners. So if the council would bear with that request, I'd like to see the ordinance brought to the dais for discussion, because I can't say anything more about it tonight other than report on this incident.
Were you finished with your comments?
Yes.
Any objections from the dais about adding that to the agenda?
Not at all.
Mr. Malpe, if you'd add that to our list. Thank you. Mr. Gasilli.
Mr. Johnson has covered, I think, all the events in the city, and so, no, I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gasilli. Mr. Collins, Vice Mayor Collins, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think I was probably at most of the events that Mr. Cameron was at, but there are a few official things that I did attend. Heartboard meeting, Housing Endowment and Regional Trust. We had a meeting last Wednesday. Also attended along with Mr. Grocott, the Fire Board meeting, where the two representatives last week in Emergency Services, JPA, on the 15th. And then in addition to that, went to the Caltrain 150th Anniversary at the train station. Was that a week ago Saturday? Mr. Olbert and I were there, and it was, it was my kind of celebration. They came, they stopped, they stayed about three minutes, they gave us a plaque, and they got back on the train and left. Let's see. I had an opportunity to go to the Burton Park Phase Two opening last Saturday. It looks spectacular. It's the best that park has ever looked, and I've been here on and off since 1955, so it's, the park looks great now. And the last thing, a couple of things I forgot to mention before. I had a nice tour of Arbor Bay School last fall. I think it was probably October, November. I think I just failed to mention it, but Arbor Bay School, as many people may know, occupies our Kiwanis Building that the city owns, and they have a remarkable school there, and it was a great tour. And last, but at least after constant badgering from my wife, I too got a flu shot. My first one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Collins. Mr. Grocott, I'm glad you were able to join us again. We missed you at the last meeting, although I want to assure you, we did not take advantage of your absence to give you all of the difficult committee assignments. I had a few things that I want to add to the list of what my colleagues have mentioned. Obviously, I too has had a number of those. I will mention just in passing the train plaque that Vice Mayor Collins was referring to. It was the first time I've ever received a bronze plaque from anybody, and they're very heavy. I was quite surprised at how heavy they were. They're not something you'd want to drop on your foot. I also wanted to mention that, and this dates back to last December, but I forgot to mention it when, at our first meeting of this year, the San Carlos History Museum, I don't know if they have any of these still available, I actually hope they do because they're really cool. It's a customized version of Monopoly, San Carlosopoly, and all of the locations on the board and the cards and whatnot that you draw from the stacks in the middle of the board are customized for our community. Frankly, I don't know if I'm ever going to open this, because this is just kind of cool to have, but if they're there and if you're a Monopoly fan, they're definitely worth looking into. I had a few things that I wanted to run by my colleagues in terms of the process for these meetings. One is you'll notice that we will be doing all our votes by roll call from now on. That's because of a tweak that the legislature made to the Brown Act, where we have to be very clear about who's voting which way on everything. That'll obviously slow our meetings down a little bit, but not too much, because we generally tend to do roll call votes anyway. I also wanted to see if my colleagues would be willing to run a little experiment, which would involve at the end of the council member comments, that we give Mr. Malpe, the city manager, an opportunity to make whatever brief comments he might want to make about things that have happened in the city, kind of on the administrative and executive side since we were last together. That's not something I want to do without making sure that everybody up here is comfortable with it, and if we don't feel it's working, we can stop doing it, but are folks OK with that?
I'm OK with it.
OK. All right. Then we will try that starting next time. Let's see. Last meeting, and Mr. Grocott, this may, will be perhaps new to you, I had asked that we agendize discussing council compensation as an item before the budget cycle, and there was some lack of clarity in the way I phrased that, where it, staff was originally proposing that we actually discuss it in closed session. Personally, what I would rather do, and my idea was, that we discuss the ramifications and dimensions of council compensation in open session, because the point of doing compensation discussions in closed session is because there's another side to the transaction, and it's a negotiating environment. Here, it's not a negotiating environment. We're not negotiating with anybody. We're just talking about our own compensation. So that is a change from what staff had thought we talked about last time, so I just want to make sure my colleagues are comfortable with us agendizing that as an open session item. OK? Hearing no objections, then we'll do it that way. Couple of cleanup items from the San Carlos Transit Village work that we did last fall. One is that I'd like to ask staff to either, at a future meeting, hopefully a near-term future meeting, either report back that we've moved those shuttles that were a subject of quite a bit of debate, or if there's a necessary action item for the council to act on, I'd like that put on the agenda, on a short shot clock, just to get it back here and get it done with. And I say it that way because I'm not sure where we left the item. Similarly, there were some Eastside residents who shared, I think with all of us, at least I hope it was with all of us, some evidence about Caltrain actually, their cleaning crews, at least on one occasion, blowing trash off of the Caltrain platform onto Old County Road. This occurs in the middle of the night as a maintenance item. That's very disturbing to me. I'm sure Caltrain doesn't mean to do that. There's probably some breakdown in communication, but nonetheless, the issue of trash and garbage management and collection on Old County Road was also something that came up in the Transit Village discussions, and I'd ask staff to report back to the council that you, that's been adequately addressed and there's a plan in place that Caltrain has signed off on and the city has signed off on to make sure the maintenance is being done and the trash collection is being done properly, or if we have to take action on something, bring an action item back for us to act on. And then lastly, I wanted to run by my colleagues the idea of, last couple of weeks, there've been a few items that came up where residents in the community were, had raised concerns about responsiveness of staff, which I would, from my own research, characterize as closing the loop. In other words, a complaint was raised, something was done, but the individual who raised the complaint wasn't necessarily notified about what action was taken. And it made me think that it might be a good thing to do at one of our upcoming meetings, the next few of which have a fairly light agenda, that we actually discuss whether or not we want to have a policy on responsiveness and closing the loop type of issues as part of our city doctrines. So I wanted to run that agenda idea by folks and see if people are willing to have that discussion.
I'm confused on what we would be talking about. If you want to report back on, from staff on every item that was, that they got a call on, or?
No, no. That's why I was rushing and not being clear. What I'd like to do is discuss whether or not we would like to establish a policy on, you know, it is the intent of the city to respond to all issues that come in from residents within X hours or X days and to notify them about what the disposition is. That type of thing. Not about specific items, because I agree, specific items, that's not really our job. It's setting policy that's our job.
But again, I, talking about anything, I think it'd be difficult to set a certain time limit, but we'll talk about it, whatever.
OK. Anybody else have objections or concerns? All right, then we'll add that to the list. And with that, which I think was one of our longest council comment periods ever, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is presentations. We have a proclamation to recognize the Week of the Family. Should I come down there? OK. We'll see whether the microphone works this time. Works great. Week of the Family was established 15 years ago through the vision and work of a lot of people, but in particular of one gentleman who I see standing up in the corner here, Mr. Eaton, a former council member, and not at all to shortchange any of the other people over the years who have worked on it. It's a really great tradition for any community, and it's particularly important in a place like San Carlos, where we very much value, we not only value family and the importance of family, but in many respects, I tend to think of San Carlos as being a family. And you may, you may overplay that, one can overplay that metaphor, but I do think this community tries to look out for itself and to look out for its members, and the Week of the Family is an expression of that and the multitudinous versions of families that we have and all the wonderful activities that the committee oversees and organizes each year. So we have a proclamation here, which I won't read the proclamation, but basically to thank everybody for all the tremendous work they've done over the last 15 years, wish you luck in the next 15, 20, 30, 40 years, because I really hope it'll be a permanent fixture of our community, and to specifically thank Mr. Eaton again for the work he's done to make this a reality. So with that, you'll be the recipient of the proclamation?
I am, but I think we have a number of members of our committee and some past chairs. I'd like them all to come up because they deserve some thanks also. Not everyone can make it tonight, but in fact, there's another event going on right now over at the Elms, which is Adopt a Grandparent Night, and some middle school kids, because we've been looking for some great ideas to involve middle school kids, not just younger kids in town. And we've got kids from Terre Linda and Central who are doing anything from games to reading to all sorts of fun things with seniors over at the Elms, and that's their way of helping out and adopting a grandparent this evening. Already this week, we have had some family hikes, we've had some stargazing. As Councilmember Johnson mentioned, the Children's Theater is very much a family-oriented thing. See if I'm leaving anything out here. We've had some stargazing in the evening, and hey, who would have predicted it wouldn't rain this time of year? So this is great. On Sunday, there were three of our ice cream shops that were discounts, and we call that Family Sunday Sunday. And by the way, all of the events are found on www.SancarlosWeekoftheFamily, all one word, dot org. I said it wrong tonight earlier. Later this week, just so you know of all the things coming up, and I'll do this briefly, tonight is Family Activity Night. Everybody in here should be with their family doing activities. We'll work on that next year. And Adopt a Grandparent Night. Tomorrow night is the Cook's Night Off, and there are a number of restaurants, so you can find out online what they are, that if you come with your family and you mention the Week of the Family, you will get a discount all around town. In addition to that, the library, which annually puts on a very nice program, anything from puppet shows to animal shows to you name it. This year, they are hosting in two shows because it's such a popular event, the Red Panda Acrobats at 4:00 and 7:00. Wednesday evening is a Family Science Expo. Again, we've involved a lot of our middle school kids that way, and that will be in the library upstairs. And Hiller Flight Night, who annually hosts, and they were one of our first participants, a night that helps teach kids with their parents, things about flight. It's a great place, it's a great resource that we have here in town. Thursday night is the Family Storytime over at the Reading Bug, a cooking school, which is hosted by some high school girls who have been doing it now for a few years, one of whom is Mr. King's daughter, and she's recruited some other friends, and it's just working out great to teach kids some cooking skills with their parents. And we have the Family Rock and Jump Night, which is just a great family activity, and you get a discount there. On Friday night is the Family Game Night. It will be at Central Middle School this year because we're outgrowing the Adult Community Center. And in addition to that, we have the Citywide Rochambeau Contest, which is going to be a big-time favorite. A kindergarten girl won it a couple of years ago, so you never know who wins. Take your chances, but we think these things are all family-related. On Saturday, we have a great scavenger hunt downtown. You meet at the museum. In addition to a Geocash Challenge, which is a little more modern, you get through a little bit older kids and families again. And then Saturday night again, presuming there's good weather, we have some stargazing again. So there's a lot of great family sort of events. I would like to first introduce some people here. Tom Davis is a member of our committee. Susan Rose is our chair this year. Lee Thompson is a past chair. That's the mayor. He hasn't been, OK. He's still up here. That's OK. We'll get him on the committee one of these years. Tim Kane is a past chair. Nancy Gutzel is a past chair. Yvette Royce is on our committee for the first time this year. We're happy to have her. And to her left is Lorena Joe Letterer, who helped out with a lot of things too. We have other members of the committee who couldn't make it, other past chairs who also couldn't make it tonight. We would like to thank the city for all of the cooperation that they've offered over the years, and this year especially. I mentioned our website, I mentioned our committees, I mentioned everything. Does everybody in the audience have a bracelet? This year, we're, hold up your bracelets, everybody. City Council, I know you have them. Because I gave them to you. There you go. OK. Wear them all week long. Help promote the Week of the Family. If you need something to take home, let us know before we all leave. Again, we thank you for the recognition. We think that this is a great opportunity to do, what happened? It snapped?
A little small.
I have a substitute. Former Boy Scout that I am, I'm always prepared. OK. But we think that this is something that fits our community. We're a very family-oriented community, and we thank the mayor for his recognition and the council, and we appreciate it very much. So thanks all, and here's the kind of group we've got.
And again, thanks, everybody. And Mr. Eaton, I've always admired your sense of timing, but regarding stargazing, I thought it was particularly cool that you managed to arrange to have a supernova.
I have a special look.
Yeah, you have a supernova showing up right during stargazing time. That's hard to do. It's a $13 million advance, not $13 million a year advance warning. So anyway, thank you all very much.
Would my colleagues like to make any comments as well?
Just it's a wonderful institution that's been going on, I think, as the mayor said, for the last 15 years. I wish my family had taken more part in it, but I think by the time it started, the kids were getting older and out of high school, and I know we could have participated, but I think it's great that there's something that we do in this city, and it does bring a lot of people together.
All right. We'll move on to public comment. I have one public comment card from Mr. John Hoffman.
Mayor and City Council Members, I put it down to a lack of familiarity with the traditional democratic process rather than to hubris to unilaterally abridge my right of appeal to the City Council by the mayor by refusing to agendize an item I requested. So I hope that among the other four council members, one or more of you will request that an appeal be put on the agenda, as you are the elected body and the final appeal. I hope that that is a near-term, future agenda, and it would be to appeal a decision of the Park and Rec Commission. So I ask you to work through the city and advise me as to when that is on the agenda, the date and time of the meeting, and I shall be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Let's see. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Staff has asked that we pull off Item 8F. In addition, I have a public comment request for Item 8H, so we're going to pull that off so we can address that separately as well. Are there, is, are there any other items that were removed from the agenda that my colleagues would like to request, or if not, I will entertain a motion for the remaining items?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items A, B, C, D, E, G, and I.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, the motion and a second. I forgot to mention for the benefit of the public that the Consent Calendar items, that if nothing, if an item is not pulled off of the Consent Calendar, they are voted on en masse without discussion by the council. So at this point, Ms. Moy, if we could call the roll?
I just want to addition, and we like to read the title of the ordinance that you're adopting tonight, which is Item 8E.
OK. Let me do that for you. Ordinance Number 1472, is that correct, Mr. Rubens?
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending Chapter 2.24.030 of the municipal code regarding prohibition of concurrent service on appoint of commissions and boards.
That adequate, Mr. Rubens? Thank you. Ms. Moy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Olbert?
Yes. If my colleagues would be willing to entertain this, I'd actually like us to deal with Item 8H, which is that public comment item at this point in the meeting, rather than waiting it to the end, so the gentleman doesn't have to stay here for the entire meeting. Is that acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
OK. So Item 8H is adopt a resolution authorizing the termination of the resale restriction agreement on 3327 Britton Avenue, Unit Number 7. Mr. Irvine, you're welcome to address us.
Mr. Mayor, council members. So my name's Steve Irvine, and in late 2010, I had been living with my parents for five years after graduating from college. years after graduating from college in Arizona. During my five years spent living in my childhood home on Belvedere Avenue in San Carlos, I was patiently saving up enough money to purchase a property of my own. That time came in January 2011, when the market was down, and I had just learned about the possibility of receiving a DAL program loan. It occurred to me that with the assistance of the DAL program loan and the money I had saved, I could actually purchase the property at 3327 Britton Ave., number seven, completely on my own with no help from my parents. This seemed like an ideal situation, as I would not be burning my parents for the money, and it would give me a great sense of accomplishment, responsibility, and the next step to becoming my own man. Even though my parents very generously offered to help out, I declined and decided to do things on my own. They are very proud of me, and it was a great feeling. Looking back in time where I find myself today, I wish I could have just sent myself a message, a warning of sorts. The details of the DAL program loan and associated resale restriction agreement were not clear to me then, as they are now. In part, I have to accept some of the blame, as I was an overly excited and ignorant first-time home buyer. However, the details of the resale restriction provided to me by my loan agent were very vague and could be described as a brief overview at best. Almost two years later, would I come to realize that my agent did not fully understand the agreement, so there was no way my agent could have effectively summarized the restriction to me. Is my signature on the resale restriction agreement? Yes, it definitely is, and in the end, I can only blame myself for that. I will never again sign another legal document, no matter how long or confusing, without fully knowing the implications. In addition, when I received the city council staff report for the meeting tonight, I was surprised to learn that I signed the incorrect resale restriction agreement, which was originally meant for someone receiving both the DAL program loan and the city's inclusionary housing ordinance secondary assistance. Besides the obvious benefits that would occur should you agree to terminate the resale restriction agreement, there is so much more at stake for me personally. Both my fiancés and my own family currently live in San Carlos, and they have for almost 30 years, not to mention grandparents for over 70. In fact...
Mr. Irvine, I'm sorry. We normally limit speaking to about two to three minutes.
I've got about no 30 seconds. I'll finish up real quick.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Not to mention grandparents for over 70. In fact, our parents only live a block apart. As you can imagine, this is very convenient for the holidays. My fiance, Ashley, and I are getting married on March 1st, but the wedding and reception will be held in San Carlos. Ashley is currently a preschool teacher at Kinder Court in San Carlos, where she has worked for almost 10 years. As you can see, we are fully ingrained in the San Carlos community, and we'd like nothing more than to remain here for the rest of our lives. It would be a dream come true to have our future children attend the same schools that Ashley and I and myself attended when we were young, White Oaks Central St. Charles. Combining these aspirations with the fact that our future family will be close to both sets of grandparents, I couldn't imagine a better future for our children. The resale restriction agreement, as it exists today, would put all of this in jeopardy. If I do not have access to the equity of my property, I will not be able to afford a down payment on a house in San Carlos. Even with the equity, it would be difficult, and that applies to San Carlos and all surrounding areas. I thought I did everything right along the way by stepping up and buying the property on my own and paying back the DAL program loan plus interest in less than two years' time, while incurring roughly $5,000 in loan costs to make it happen. My only mistake was being a young and ignorant first-time home buyer who was just too excited to page through and understand all the legal documents. I ask of you today that you graciously provide me with the opportunity to remain in San Carlos, the city of good living, where I can start the next chapter of my life with my future wife and family. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Irvine.
Could I ask the gentleman a question?
Certainly.
I'm a little confused. This is a little bit of a confusing item, and I had to go to staff to make sure I understood it completely. So are you asking us to adopt this, or are you against this? I'm a little confused.
I'm asking for the adoption of the termination.
So you're supporting the item on the agenda?
I am.
Great, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
It is confusing, I agree.
No, no problem. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvine. As we talked about at our last meeting, before we do discussions on items, we need a motion and a second. So if there are no other questions for staff, I would ask, or entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 2014...
Adopt.
Oh, adopt, I'm sorry. Adopt Resolution 2014 dash...
Six.
Six. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the termination of the resale restriction agreement on 13... or, excuse me, 3327 Britton Ave., unit number seven.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Irvine, you can sit down.
I'm sorry.
You just stand there, sorry.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to make one comment. Young people make mistakes. You shouldn't have to suffer for them for too long in their lives.
Last time I checked, old people make mistakes, too.
True. Don't look at me.
I was looking in a mirror, actually. All right, with that, Ms. Moy, hearing no further call for discussion, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. Mr. Irvine, live long and prosper.
Thank you very much. Very, very much.
All right, we will move on to item nine, section nine, Reports to Council. First item is update on the Corollaris Traffic Study.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is Matt Lee. I'm the city engineer. I'm here before you today to provide a brief update on the Corollaris Ave. update and what has transpired since. In November, there was a letter sent to the council and to the director and city manager in regards to the issue on Corollaris Ave. between San Carlos Ave. and Elizabeth. The concerns that were expressed were from Megan Miller, one of the residents in the neighborhood. There was also a letter from the Briton Acres PTA, as well as a petition signed by pretty much everyone on the block, except for a few. The concerns they had themselves was for speeding along that corridor, pedestrian safety, since there is no real sidewalk on that corridor, except for a painted striped line. And the other concern was the crossing of Elizabeth, because there's no stop signs. And the neighborhood has experienced many times vehicles failing to yield to pedestrians in that area. We had a meeting with the neighborhood group in mid-November to discuss their concerns. And since then, we've had meetings with the mayor himself, along with the city attorney, to discuss kind of the process of how we go about this and the risk of implementing a stop sign in a location where the warrants were not met. We also had a meeting...
Sorry, Mr. ... Could you repeat what you just said? I apologize. I didn't understand. I'm sorry.
So in December, we had a few meetings. One of the meetings we had was with the mayor and the city attorney, and we essentially discussed the process of how we were going to address the issue. And we had a discussion on the risks of what could possibly be risks of adopting a stop sign in a location where the warrants were not met. We also...
Sorry, I... That last phrase is just... I apologize. I must have something wrong with my hearing. The last phrase?
We had a discussion with the mayor and...
No, I got all that part. You said stop sign, and then I lost it.
Warrants. I believe the issue of warrants. If you could explain what the warrant issue is.
Okay, so...
Sorry.
In, per the MUTCD, which is a manual and uniform traffic control device, which is a federal standard, the stop signs shall be installed in places where there are warrants that are qualified to install stop signs. And they come from with a variety of requirements, which could be based on traffic volume, number of accidents, et cetera. And as we go further along, there, I'll discuss on the warrant analysis that was done in 2011 at that intersection. Ultimately, there at that intersection, there was a warrant analysis done by TJKM back in 2011 that indicated that a stop sign was not warranted for that location. We are currently working with TJKM for them to reevaluate that intersection, see if there are any optional warrants that may be readily available, or if there's any conditions that they've noticed out in the field, with a second look through to see if stop signs were warranted. That's ultimately what we've been doing with consultant. The other meeting we had was with Public Safety, which was fire and the sheriff's department, to discuss traffic calming measures, the specific types of traffic calming measures and what effects they had on emergency response. Since then, we've also reevaluated the studies that have been done for the corridor from different stakeholders, such as the San Carlos School District, where they did a Safe Trauma School Report on Corollaris Ave. themselves. And as mentioned before, there was the stop sign warrant analysis. And the other item was, is the... is also reviewing the traffic counts that have been done in the past year and a half. There's been approximately four traffic data collections for that location by PD and Public Works for the past 18 months. With all those being reviewed, staff has worked diligently with the neighborhood themselves to come up with some alternatives that may work for the area. And at our January 21 Transportation and Circulation Commission meeting, we've discussed the ideas of some of those alternatives. And we are currently working with the neighborhood group to reach out to the neighborhood, to have, to open up the discussion on the alternatives that are being selected, the alternatives that have been presented, and to solicit comments on what their thoughts were on it. I think that's going to probably take another couple of weeks, but once we solicit those responses back, staff will reevaluate all the alternatives and determine which alternative will be best selected to go forward. And in the, on the February 20... the second council meeting in February, we will come and present to council on the alternative that was selected.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Questions?
Yeah, so...
Mr. Grocut?
If I heard that last part right, we're going to have this item on the agenda, where we'll be able to have discussion and give some direction and that sort of thing? Is that correct, at our second meeting in February?
Would I interrupt for a second? I actually think that if there's some discussion and direction that the DIAS wants to give tonight, we can do that, too. My understanding is that staff is going to be bringing back some specific proposals, which we'd certainly be, you know, discussing, but if there's some points that the DIAS wants to make...
Do you want to go through questions first, and then have some comment? As you were upstairs, do you want to make the comments now?
I would rather do questions followed by comments, and I'm just looking at Mr. Rubens to make sure we can comment and discuss a report, correct? As long as we don't take action.
Yeah, we've had a policy of when these items are on the agenda, that you can give general direction to staff. It's just you're not taking formal action on any particular item. It's suggestions to staff.
Okay, that's what I would assume. Then let's do questions first, and we'll come back to the generalized comments. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. You mentioned some alternatives were presented to the neighborhood. What were the alternatives?
There are ultimately, the alternatives came down to two general items. One would be speed bumps that would reduce the speeds at specific locations along Corollaris. And the other alternative would be a narrowing of the lanes in that location to match what was existing down south of the corridor. And then out of that came a, another alternative, which was a combination of both. And so those would be the three alternatives that are being discussed.
And so can I ask why a stop sign isn't one of the alternatives?
Well, the stop sign itself, we are waiting for the warrant analysis to come back before we make a determination there. The alternatives that we are actually focusing on now is essentially the traffic calming measures along the corridor and not at the intersection. Staff has decided, in the interest of time, to decouple those two items, so we can move forward with a solution on the corridor.
If I may add to that, Mr. Johnson, just from my own work on this over the years, not this particular issue, but the general topic. One of the things that's a little counterintuitive, at least it was for me, is the California statutes actually specify you can't use stop signs to mitigate traffic speeds. They have to be there for control of interactions. And there actually is potential legal liability for a city that puts a stop sign in a place where it doesn't meet the criteria or warrants. Warrants is the technical term. Criteria is the way I tend to think of it. It's an area that I think hardly anybody really understands, because it doesn't make intuitive sense. We'd like to have a stop sign to stop the cars. But the presumption is the cars have an ability or a right, the drivers have a right to drive.
Okay, thanks. And so when you say there's, we're looking to see if a stop sign is warranted, is that a legal definition? Is it, are you saying we're looking to see if it's legally allowable, or if it is recommended by an expert?
So the warrants themselves are part of a federal standard through MUTCD. And through the MUTCD, they say that the warrant shall be, the warrant shall be met in order for a stop sign to be placed there. So pro the...
And what would happen if we chose to disregard that?
We would bear, sorry to interrupt, we would bear a liability if there was an accident that occurred because of an unwarranted stop sign being in place. And for example, what could happen is if a pedestrian was hit by a car at that location, the driver of the car could sue, who perhaps would have been sued by the pedestrian for being injured, could sue the city, saying that that stop sign's not warranted, you gave the pedestrian a false sense of security, and that's what caused or contributed to the accident.
I see.
It's a liability issue. It's not like we can't do it.
And the basis is largely on traffic flow? Is that, the number of cars per unit time is, is that generally the basis for what determination that whether or not a stop sign is warranted?
The basis is many factors, but the majority of it would be the volume of traffic approaching the intersection and the amount of accidents that have occurred at that intersection.
Okay. Because I just, you know, final comment, observation, which is that it's a pretty highly trafficked street in San Carlos. And I take the observation, having walked a lot of streets this past summer, that there are many stop signs in San Carlos for which there is negligible traffic. And so it, this scenario was explained to me before, but I found it a little bit counterintuitive that here we have the entire neighborhood wanting a stop sign, relatively high volume of traffic. There are other parts of the city where there are stop signs, where there is almost no traffic. And yet, we feel potentially encumbered by a federal standard. So anyway, I'm looking forward to hearing more as we progress.
Other questions?
The only question I have, Mr. Lee, is will traffic and circulation hear this before we hear it the second time? Or would they hear it a second time before we hear it on the second meeting in February? I think what we would do is we would update them on the progress. I'm just curious about the process, that's all.
Other questions? Mr. Collins?
Mr. Johnson asked a question I was going to ask on the stop sign, so we just have to wait for that second study, right?
Yeah, ultimately, we have to wait for that second study. It would be a moot point if the consultant was able to find another optional warrant that would allow for a stop sign to be placed in that location.
I'm sure you mentioned it, but I didn't, I don't remember when the last one was done.
2011.
Oh, so it was very recent.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then the issue of sidewalks, I know that they brought that up. That was one of the three alternatives, or one of the three suggestions, is that right? Actually put in real sidewalks?
No, one of the three suggestions would be to narrow the travel path of that location.
Right.
It's a little more abstract than saying we're going to be actually putting sidewalks in right now. We're floating the idea of certain types of traffic calming measures and alternatives. The sidewalk itself would definitely, could definitely be a solution, but it's more of a longer-term item because of the amount of capital funding that would be needed for that location. What staff was doing, what staff was working with the neighborhood was to try to find solutions that we could implement now, as we look for more funding for the longer-term infrastructure improvements.
Okay. And is there another, is there also a criteria for speed bumps to the road, the slope, and all that?
There are no MUTCD standards, but there are, there are eligibility requirements developed by other cities and counties that discuss when they can be warranted themselves. And so as going through this process, staff has looked at those and tried to determine what eligibility requirements we should have for our speed bumps.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan, just, I'm sorry. You're done? I apologize.
I'm done.
Just had one quick... Did the neighborhood have a preference? In other words, if we said that the report came back, let's say, and it said stop sign would be okay, is that the preference that the neighborhood has? At our first meeting, I think... At our first meeting, I think there the neighborhood doesn't have a specific preference yet, but I've heard from neighbors that have discussed the ideas of having a speed hump and stop sign.
Okay, so it's not unanimous that this is the big item. It could be they just want to slow the traffic down. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
As we discussed in the preamble or setup to this item, we do have an opportunity to give staff general direction, correct? And I know Mr. Grokot had indicated he had some comments along those lines he wanted to make, and I do as well, if others do, we'll go down the line. But let's start with Mr. Grokot.
Well, my comment would be that when I was called and asked to take a look at this, I walked, I actually parked at Bell and Corlaris, and then I walked from where I parked my truck. And I should note just quickly, too, I managed to get there before the school traffic came into play and people arrived to drop off their children and so forth. And I had done that on purpose so I could see things develop. But because I had some extra time, I walked all the way from where I had parked at Bell out towards San Carlos Avenue. And I hadn't quite made it to San Carlos Avenue when I met one of the mothers who had made the phone call. And then we walked back towards Bell, which is that's the intersection. Bell is the intersection where the two schools are. We have the San Carlos School and we have the Catholic Elementary School as well that is associated with the church. And I spent some time there watching that intersection as things developed and the morning progressed and a lot of people showed up to drop off their kids. And then after watching that for a little while, I walked the rest of the way to Britton. The reason I tell you that story is because I'm trying to point out the fact that, to me, to do this piecemeal from San Carlos Avenue to Elizabeth is a mistake. This is an entire corridor that is being used both for commute traffic and then overlaid with that is people trying to get their kids to school. So there's a there's a huge impact at a certain timeframe in the morning that lasts about 20 minutes and then goes away. So maybe there's nothing we can do now, given the scope that's been set. But again, I'm going to repeat, I think looking at this as though it's a problem that goes from San Carlos Avenue to Elizabeth is a huge mistake. It the only thing I I know you guys get tired of me sometimes comparing things to the work that I do, but it would be like, you know, talking to someone who wanted to redesign one part of their house, knowing full well they're going to redesign the whole shebang later on, and then just, you know, saying, okay, so we're going to just focus on this kitchen bath remodel and that's it. But we know we're going to do a big, huge remodel later. And the mistake is, in doing that, that kind of thing, when you approach it that way, is you might do a repair or something and then rip the whole thing out later when you take the full scope that you should have taken to begin with. So I think we really need to look at it as a full scope project. And then, if we want to just take care of things from San Carlos Avenue to Elizabeth, that would be fine if that's all we can afford to do initially. But, you know, part of the problem here is what's going on the whole length of the corridor. And I think one of the reasons what is going on, the whole length of the corridor, has to do with the inconsistency of the street improvements that's been made over the years. It was mentioned, there are sidewalks part of the way, there are no sidewalks, there are certain kinds of conditions at the stop signs, the way the stop sign is set up at Bell and the way it's set up in one of the other intersections is different, the way it's depending on whether you're going north or south, it's different. I think that whole street needs to be looked at and be made a consistent corridor. And in that consistency, you do things that will create calming devices, calming situations. And we don't have that right now, and I think we really need to look at it that way. Those are my comments.
I don't object to the analogies, Mr. Grokot, because as I have learned somewhat painfully through the construction of my own house, they are in fact very useful. So other comments? I said I had some, but I want to.
I tend to agree with Mr. Grokot. I drive that every week. I don't drive it during the week. I drive it on Sunday, which of course is a whole different world. There's no question that I don't know about stop signs from Bell to Britton, but there certainly could be some calming things that we perhaps could look at because you're right, it is it is really a connector. I know in the morning sometimes when I'm coming down San Carlos Avenue, folks are coming off of off that street, you know, coming to work or going where they're going. So I wouldn't disagree with you on that, that we could. And I kind of think excluding a stop sign, I think we could probably hopefully expand our, you know, I would say to staff, it's I don't want you to spend a million hours on this, but I think you might want to take just a quick glance there at what Mr. Grokot said. I think it would be helpful because I agree with him. I'd hate to do part of it, and then the other part of it's twice as bad when we've got his chance to do the whole thing at once, assuming, again, dollars and cents come up to the right way. And and staff looks at it and says, yeah, we tend to agree with this, that, or the other. And again, you guys are a lot more expert on traffic and engineering than I am. But I think it'd be it wouldn't be a bad idea to look at at what Mr. Grokot said.
Hey, Mr. Lee, I would actually, I guess not second, but third, what Mr. Grisilia and Mr. Grokot had mentioned, I think taking a little bit of a larger scale look at this would be a good thing to do. The only nuance that I'd add is I do think, and as you pointed out, we have to balance sort of short term and long term things. But I think looking at it in the context of the long term so that we don't end up ripping the kitchen out six months from now or two years from now when we do the rest of the project is definitely a very good point. The other sort of general comments that I wanted to wanted to make, I would encourage staff to, first off, be creative. And maybe the other maybe the other term is even consider steering a little close to the wind on the interpretation of the warrants, despite my interchange with Mr. Johnson before. I understand that that's what the rules are, but I also understand that there is some interpretation in here. There's some judgment calls that go on. And to the extent there are any, I think, you know, let's try and be a little aggressive and creative there. And as a follow on to that, both in terms of the risk benefit trade off and even the cost benefit trade off, I would also encourage staff to not necessarily rule things out before they come back to the to the DIAS. Ultimately, the decision about whether or not to take the risk of putting a stop sign someplace that it might not be warranted, I believe is up to the council. If the council were to choose to take that risk on behalf of the community, we could do that. I'm not saying we should do that, but I'm saying we could. So similarly, if something appears to be too expensive to deal with, I would still encourage you to bring it back to us as an option and just make sure we understand it's very expensive and that therefore you don't recommend it. Because it's this is a multi-factor balancing act that we're going through, and the more information we have, the better decision we'll be able to make. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Maltby, is that since I know you're interested in this as well, is that clear as to what we the DIAS is asking staff to do?
I thought that was a great discussion of the council. I think we got a lot of additional direction. I know there were a couple of things that sparked some ideas in me that I shared with Mr. Walter. So we will continue to pursue the project and get it back in front of the council as soon as it's ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Okay, next up, item 9B, update on fire and emergency services contract. Chief Moplin, I have to tell you, when I parked in the garage downstairs, I really liked the color of your vehicle.
Well, it just coincidentally that we went with red. Just it's no it's no it wasn't bound on purpose.
Well, it's not even fire engine red. It's like a better red.
It's actually called victory red.
There you go.
So we like to think positive. Oops.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Stan Moplin, your deputy fire chief. I'm here tonight to give a quick overview of the second quarter of the 2013-2014 year for the fire department's activities and and what we've been doing for the community. I like to include in my presentation, I like to keep this in here, the org chart of the fire department. And the reason I do that is just not that you don't know what's going on with the organization, but just the fact that we'd like the public to just keep be reminded that they are in fact served by the full force of the Redwood City Fire Department, not just the two stations in San Carlos, but the whole 90 person force of the of the fire department works to protect San Carlos also. Just a quick overview of the call volumes that we've been running up against. And while we strive for consistency, unfortunately, we missed the mark by one call between the two quarters. So you can see that we may run a pretty consistent shop here for the call volume in San Carlos. And thankfully, as you'll see by the next two slides, the calls are fairly fairly consistent in the types of calls. And as you can see, this is the combined call or types of calls for both fire or both cities. In San Carlos specifically, you can see that it's just that large spike is always the the emergency medicine side that we that we consistently respond to. Luckily, that the the columns to the left of those those two tall columns are the red for the fires, and those numbers are very low at this time, especially in light of what your neighbors to the south have been experiencing lately under our watch. So we'll talk about that in a moment. Getting more to the meat and potatoes of what we're doing for the community, our fire and life safety inspections, which we do on an annual basis, as you can see, we've got quite a few quite a few inspections done. And in also in light of some fires that have recently occurred in Redwood City, we've made sure that we've kept our inspections of the apartment buildings in San Carlos on pace, if not increased, to make sure that we are reducing our risk to the community for similar type fires that could occur in San Carlos. We thankfully haven't had fires of those magnitudes in San Carlos in a very long time. So we're keeping up with our business inspections and our multifamily residential life safety inspections also. As far as the public outreach and getting in touch with the community, which I know was a council council concern when Redwood City came on board, was we through July 1st to December 31st, we did 30 events contacting the public for public education, and we reached over 1,800 people throughout the community in our efforts to keep the public informed of the latest fire and life safety practices. One event that I would like to talk about, while it was not a San Carlos fire, it was a fire in Redwood City that did impact the region. And I wanted to give a quick update to the council on what the city of Redwood City is doing to mitigate this hazard because it did affect, obviously, the region as far as the South Bay, Santa Clara County, Alameda County. And we had, as you're well aware, we had two major fires at Sims Metals within several weeks of each other, which is very a very rare occurrence. One of the things that we did was during these both of these fires, these are very difficult fires to fight in the sense that it's not just a case of putting water on the on the fire itself and putting it out. The piles have to be dismantled to be to be extinguished, and usually these piles are quite large. And both fires lasted at least 12 hours or more in duration. And the response that we had was kept to a minimum because there's not a whole lot of complex operations that we have to do in relation to maybe a building fire, but it's more of a working in coordination with Sims Metals to to put the fire out. The investigation for both fires is very difficult because unfortunately, to put the fire out, we have to shred the evidence, literally. The only way that these fires can be put out is they run the material that's burning through a shredder, and that's what extinguishes the fire. So it makes it very difficult for us to determine the cause, although we can make some ideas about what causes these fires. We have some general general thoughts on them. We don't have a specific cause on either one yet. They're still under investigation, though, by the fire marshal. Probably of even greater concern, though, is the temporary operational restrictions that the city of Redwood City has put on Sims Metals to reduce this risk. And what we've done is the city's put a 60 day set of restrictions on while the city and the port evaluate Sims Metals operations. A couple of these restrictions are that they are to have no material on site at the end of each day, which is which is contrary to what they've done in the past, where they've had huge stockpiles of materials day after day after day. So we've required them to shred all of their material before the end of the day before they go home. They're to maintain a 24 hour, seven day a week presence of people who can operate the equipment should we have something else occur. And we're also working on some issues with the water retention ponds. And the city's working closely with some federal agencies to see what we can do to bring their standards of safety much higher. Sims has been very cooperative, as you can imagine, in helping us address this issue. And in fact, I think as a result of these two fires, we're seeing some industry groundbreaking measures to keep these fires from occurring as they're very problematic, of course. And again, we wanted to make sure that the city of San Carlos was aware of the actions that Redwood City is taking based on the regional the region effect of these types of fires. What's next for the future? On the on one sense, we have a battalion chief's test coming up, so we'll be we're looking at our command staff. We have a couple of staff or chief officers that are during their the end of their careers, so we'll be replacing those very soon. And we're still continuing to hire a couple of more firefighters to bring us to full strength and with retirements and those types of things also, we always want to be ready for those vacancies as they occur. And finally, continuing, as I reported in the first quarter, we're continuing to work on our strategic plan process, which we anticipate taking about a year to finally get it to where we want it. And this will be the the guidebook that the fire department will follow for the next. We're anticipating five years to to kind of help us make sure we understand where we're going and to be able to better prepare for it. One item that's not on your on your presentation, though, that we will be getting very proactive in is obviously the result of the unprecedented drought and fire season. And quite frankly, the only reason that we know that we're in a different fire season is we flipped the calendar from December 31st to January 1st and changed the year. The fire season has gone continuously from last year to this year. We never saw a break. We've had resources deployed, not so much Redwood City and San Carlos, but there have been resources deployed out of the county just as recent as December through Christmas on fires that we've never seen in this time of the year. So we're going to become very proactive in engaging the community and being aware of the effects of the drought and the dangers and the hazards of a wildland fire in the interface between homeowners and the wildland. We anticipate a lot of contact with the community, some PSAs to go out, some very proactive inspection programs going on. But we're going to be very aggressive with with our public awareness on this topic as we're very concerned about it. That's all for my presentation, and I'm open for any questions that may come up.
Thank you, chief. Questions for the chief? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chief Moplin. One of the big issues that we faced with the San Carlos Fire Department was a high degree of turnover. Can you talk a little bit about just staff retention on the Redwood City side and, you know, kind of compare and contrast hiring and turnover?
Sure. Really, what the turnover that we're looking at now is really is almost 100% based on retirements now. The hiring that we're doing is, again, to replace to replace those retirement vacancies. We had one vacancy that we had literally one person in Redwood City based on some budget cuts several years ago that we're rectifying and bringing a balance to the shifts. But really, what we're seeing as far as turnover is through retirements only at this point.
That's great. That's great news. And I would say, in terms of community outreach, there was a fire truck that came to Heather Preschool a couple of weeks ago. My daughter was very excited to get to ride on or to get to at least see the fire truck. Thanks for that.
Well, we love being there, too, so.
Mr. Grokot?
Just a couple of questions. The first one has to do with just truck coverage. And I know when we went through the whole changeover, we ended up in a situation where we had a department with with a truck that was in our community in one of our stations on occasion at least half the year versus now we get truck service essentially through Redwood City. Can you comment on how that's how that's going?
Absolutely. In fact, this is a great time for this question. January 13th, we initiated a squad program, as was in your newsletter, where we brought in a rescue squad component into Station 9 downtown Redwood City, which is where the ladder truck is located. Our ultimate goal is to have Engine 9 back in that station along with the ladder truck. But in the meantime, we brought a rescue squad in to relieve the the medical call component on the ladder truck. And we've actually seen a great spike. We don't have any data just yet, but even just since the 13th of January, we've seen a huge spike in the availability of Truck 9 to be able to respond to calls that it's that's really intended to respond on. Just the other day, I was in my office, and we had a medical emergency dispatched out of Station 9 that the squad went on. And literally 30 seconds later, the truck came into San Carlos on a vehicle accident that had the squad not been there, the truck would have been tied up, and we would have had to rely on another community for that. So we've we've already seen a great increase in the trucks availability to respond.
So to follow up on that, that was going to be my second question, is I thought I had seen something in the paper that Redwood City was looking at a different approach to medical calls without using actual fire equipment. Is that correct, or am I misreading that?
It may have been a misunderstanding on the fact that I think the latest news release was on the squad concept that we rolled out. You know, we're constantly evaluating how we're delivering service, and especially under the new Affordable Care Act, we're going to be looking closely, all fire departments are looking very closely at how emergency medicine is delivered because it's going to change the landscape of that and hopefully make it more proactive where we're out in the community more versus having to react to a need for our services. But as of right now, we're really probably the latest thing we've been putting out in the press is our squad program.
So just a comment to that, and the rest of the council might want to speak on this as well. As that goes forward, you know, your next report would be six months from now. But if there's something in regards to what you mentioned, But if there's something in regards to what you mentioned with the Affordable Care Act and how the service is being provided and so forth, if there could be something brought to us before six months, if there's a need for it, that would be great. I suppose this could come up for discussion also at the council retreat as an issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grokod. Mr. Grisilli?
Quick question, Chief. On the inspections, do you have any kind of a feel for, you indicated you inspected 22 apartment buildings and then 28 apartment buildings, whether they all passed or whether they didn't pass or?
The only thing I have on that for tonight is anecdotal. And usually, we see, or the usual mode we see is if something is grossly negligent, we'll know about it. Again, anecdotally, though, generally, if they don't pass, it's a very minor infraction. You know, most of the multi-residentials are very well-kept up.
And then I assume if they had an item that they didn't pass, then you schedule within a couple of weeks or whenever appropriate time to go back and look at it again?
That's correct. We usually give them about two weeks to make their correction. They're communicated with. And to have a building that goes beyond a second inspection or a reinspection is very rare.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. It just gives me confidence that everybody is keeping up with what you want them to do.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Grisilli. Vice Mayor Collins?
Just one crazy question. How does metal catch on fire?
You ever dumped sodium in a pool?
There is all kinds of things coming into these sites that we never even thought of. We've get everything from either the car, the crushed cars while they're supposed to be stripped down of all their combustibles. There are something, things sneak through. If you look at a car today, it's mostly plastic. We actually were talking with Sims Metals, and they even brought to the point that they even have the little razor scooters now that have the little light-up wheels. That's a battery. And if people leave that battery in there when they scrap it, that can start a fire. It's, they're having to get very minute in their inspections of their loads, and we're requiring them to do that. They've actually slowed down their load intake, probably, I can't even begin to guess, but there's trucks lined up outside waiting again because they've slowed their process down and have been very thorough in their checking of the loads. But yeah, it's a bit of a head-scratcher sometimes, especially at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning.
Okay. Thanks.
Chief, a few questions here. When you do building safety inspections, particularly, I'm thinking, multifamily residential, is there an earthquake component, earthquake safety component to your inspection, or is it just fire?
It's mostly just fire. The building side of the inspection is, we leave it to the building department to say, you know, they've met their standards when they come through the process. But we're for fire and life safety mostly at all.
Okay. Regarding the Sims Metal fire, one thing I didn't get a clear picture of from the news reports is, was there any toxicity associated with that? Was there a risk to surrounding communities or?
Well, and this is, this is an interesting question because you'll hear on the news occasionally, people will talk about fires. The reporters will say the smoke is either hazardous or not hazardous or toxic, and all smoke is toxic. And we tell people that they should not breathe smoke at any time. Certainly, the content that was burning in Sims Metals creates a different type of toxicity, if you will. We don't have the exact particulate makeup. We've been working with Bay Area Air Quality Management District on the readings and what they're seeing. But, you know, this is why we work on community alerts. We work on, think, people saying, you know, basically, and with the, where the smoke can go that we can't predict, you know, we'll give the, we have a very, a statement that we put out is if you smell smoke or if you sense something, that's the time to stay indoors. To put out a blanket, shelter in place with very strict corridors is very, very short-sighted on our part if we were to do that. And we've learned that from years and years ago in the past.
I'll mention that, I'm sure you're familiar with this, Chief, for my colleagues' benefit, that the Sims Metal fire actually came up in the discussion at the SBWMA board meeting, actually shortly after the board meeting. Because South Bay Side Recycling that operates the transfer station and recology, they were actually amazed at the fact that a number of these incoming load inspection rules had to be implemented because they operate under an incredibly strict set of rules. And I suspect that's because, being a public-sector service, there are much, there's a much higher standard that they have to meet. But one question I had about the additional restrictions that Redwood City has put on the operation of Sims Metal, do you know, are there any facilities in San Carlos that we need to be thinking about those kind of risk adjustment factors?
Certainly, nothing like what Sims Metal has. I can't think of anything off the top of my head that would compare, that we would need to look at and restrict in that manner.
Okay. Obviously, if you ever do, please make sure you let Mr. Malp know.
Absolutely.
The, follow, but a little bit different perspective from a question that Council Mayor Johnson had asked. I always like to find out your sense of what the overtime load is because that was a big factor as well that was the consequence of the high level of turnover. Are we back to a more normal level of overtime, or are we still burning people out?
We're back to, yeah, we're back to a very, a more normal level, if you will, as you stated, compared to where we were a few years ago. We were working diligently to increase our relief staff. So as we had started before with the San Carlos Fire Department standalone, and we've increased that with Redwood City, combining the two departments together, that has taken a great load off of the crews. We still have overtime. There's just no getting around it in our business completely. But yeah, the load has dropped off quite a bit, and we're more at a more manageable level.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Last question I have is the, in terms of your strategic plan, and really not the strategic plan, but looking forward, I hope that the process of looking at consolidating Station 16, I forget the station in Redwood, 12, and the county station, or the CalFire station, I hope that is still on the radar and still being moved forward?
Absolutely. That's one of our next steps that we're looking at. And we have a report to you coming up on that in the next couple of months, I believe.
Good, because, you know, we'd love to save a little bit of money in this area. So, any other questions, Mr. Grokod?
Not really a question, but just a comment or two. The one comment I had was that I'd seen a video that a friend had sent me, and what it had to do with was the disposal of those batteries that mostly get used in smoke detectors. And the irony of the story was a fellow had gone through his house and changed out the batteries per the fire department, a little notice he got from the fire department, and he put them in a bag and threw them in the trash. And one battery, because of especially the design of those batteries, one rubbed against the other, shorted, caused a fire in his trash, caused a fire in his garage, caused a fire for his house. And it went up pretty quick. And the whole video of this thing was on YouTube. So caution on throwing away those batteries. Of course, what we really should do is put them in a, you know, through Recology's recycle program on those. But, and then the only other comment I wanted to make was, I wasn't going to say anything about this, but since you brought up the fire in Redwood City at the, is it called Sims?
Yes.
Yeah. I was, and this was a discussion I had at the coffee shop where I meet in the morning and, you know, talk about things in the paper and so forth. And there are a number of comments of people who were shocked at the action of the Air Resources Board when you guys haven't even finished your investigation. And the talk that we had was, what if it was arson? And yet Sims has to pay this fine by the Air Resources Board? That seemed completely unfair. And so I just wanted to make that comment that I think until you guys are done with your investigation and any, especially, you know, I don't think, unless there is some criminality on the part of the company, you know, I think the Air Resources Board is being heavy-handed. That's just me. That's my feeling on it. I'm not saying that's coming from the DIAS, but.
Any other comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing your next report. Item 9C, update on PG&E natural gas line, line 147. Mr. Rubens?
Mr. Mayor, council members, brief report on what's happening with regard to line 147. The, on the legal front at the CPUC, the city, along with the Office of Rapier Advocates, have filed a joint petition for rehearing at the CPUC. The basis for that request is that the, there's several of them, actually. So if you don't want me to go through them, I won't go through them tonight, but I could for the benefit of the public. It's about six of them. The decision approves, use the term maximum operating pressure as opposed to maximum allowable operating pressure. That makes the decision unclear for regulators and makes it, would make it difficult if there ever were a, an incident on line 147 for the NTSB to look at what the CPUC did because MAOP, or maximum allowable operating pressure, is defined in the federal regulations, whereas maximum operating pressure is not. Maximum operating pressure is usually a term used by the operator, in this case PG&E. So there's a problem with the way the order is worded in that respect. One of the other grounds is that the decision of the CPUC seems to indicate that federal regulations don't apply to line 147 and instead replace it with a different standard. That the commission excluded evidence, including our expert consultant, by moving the pairing forward in an expedited manner. They did not assess the reliability of PG&E's records in determining whether or not the line should be certified and allowed to have its pressure increased to 330 PSI. And we, the city of San Carlos specifically was denied due process because of the expedited proceedings. Also, on the same day, because remember, the decision arose out of December 19th hearing where the CPUC both considered our request to keep line 147 at the lower pressures and the recommendation for a fine against PG&E. Well, PG&E also filed a request for rehearing on their fine. They're alleging that the $14,350,000 fine is not justified based upon the record because there was no finding that any of the PG&E officials intentionally misled the CPUC in its record-keeping and regarding line 147. So, and specifically the filing of the errata on July 3rd, 2013. So that, both those are back at the CPUC with a rehearing request. Both the city and other interested parties will definitely be responding to PG&E's request. And then we assume that PG&E will respond to our request for rehearing, which means it goes back through the same process, goes back to the administrative law judge, then back up to the full commission.
Thank you, Mr. Rubens.
That's the end of my report.
Mr. Malp, do you have a report as well, or, okay? Questions for staff from the DIAS?
I have a couple. The first one I had was, just has to do with the fine. Can you inform us of what happens when there are fines like that? Where does that money go and what's it used for?
Well, there's fines and penalties, this is my understanding, of how assessments can be issued against regulated utility. A fine is a true fine, and the State General Fund receives the money. So in this case, the $14,350,000 would go to the state of California. If it's a penalty, then that money would go to the CPUC. And it's divided in a formulaic way between safety programs and funding of the CPUC's budget.
Okay. And the other question I have is, I don't know if it's for you to address or the city manager or what, which, but I know I've received some emails, I would assume the council's received the same ones, of people concerned about the safety issue because we've made so much of a, you know, a broadcast issue of this, and it's been in the paper and Mr. Hill and so forth. And additionally, when I've gone out on my, you know, meeting with clients, they know I'm a council member, and so they invariably, at the end of the meeting, say, I'd also like to ask you about, and all of these clients live within, you know, a couple of blocks of Britton Avenue. And honestly, I'm at a loss for what to tell them of how serious is this? How dangerous is it? One of the people that I talked to was telling me about a friend who, they're selling their house and moving out because the wife is so upset and concerned. And frankly, I don't know what to say because I don't know, you know, how much of this is, I don't know, I just don't know what to say because if the danger is really there that was brought to the council originally, I don't see why the line is still in operation. But if it's not there, I'm just at a total loss.
Mr., can I just speak for a second? I mean, I agree with you that, I'm frustrated because, you know, on my watch, we started, and of course, now Mayor O'Board has it. We are hitting rock walls here. I mean, Mr. Rubens will tell you, sort of standing there with, you know, with protest signs and blocking off the world, there's nothing legally that we're not doing. We're doing everything, as I understand it, right, Mr. Malp? Doing everything we can legally does. And I mean, to interrupt the question, but I mean...
No, it's fine. And if I can just, I'll respond just real briefly to what could be, you know, a very extensive, lengthy conversation. Basically, this started when we received an email that was written by a PG&E engineer. And in that email, the PG&E engineer made reference to a whole number of safety concerns related to line 147. Could this have happened to line 147? Could that have happened to line 147, et cetera, et cetera? And the city's position has been, we would like all those questions investigated by the CPUC. Now, unfortunately, what happened when we went before the CPUC is that those issues were very much truncated into this MAOP issue and how much pressure can the line operate under. That's one issue, but there's a whole list that were never included in the complaint that the administrative law judge heard. And so, you know, our position really remains right where it was in the beginning, that there are a lot of concerns that were raised by a PG&E engineer that we've just never received the answers to, you know, what has been done to verify whether or not those questions should be a concern to our community. So sadly, we don't know. We know that PG&E, a PG&E engineer raised these questions, but we also know that they were never, they weren't addressed as part of the CPUC hearing. They focused on the, are we sitting on the San Bruno situation comment that was walked back by the engineer saying he was referencing, you know, records? But that doesn't speak to all the very technical safety issues that he pointed out in his email, such as was the pipe damaged by the 2010 pressure testing? And the only response we've ever had from PG&E is, will the line pass the pressure test? Well, our expert has some concerns with the metal that's in some of the sections of the pipe and the MAOP or the maximum allowable operating pressure that they're currently being relied on. So what we're trying to do is get those questions all addressed by the CPUC so that we have some comfort level.
I had a number of comments and questions myself, but anybody else?
No, go forward.
Mr. Grisilli?
No, no.
Mr. Rubens or staff, Mr. Malp as well. It occurs to me, do we have a, do we have any section of the city website that's kind of an FAQ and a, here's what's going on with line 147 and what the situation is? Do we have anything like that?
I don't believe we have a FAQ, but we do have, I believe, a section of the website. Primarily, most of the information that we've put out that's in a succinct format are the various press releases that we've done for the community in terms of what's happening. We could certainly expand on that. Right now, I'm working on a letter that will be mailed out community-wide to all our residents on the issue in the next couple of weeks.
I would definitely support staff providing that kind of information, not only through a letter, but to put something up as a reference, basically, on the website because it says Mr. Grokod and Mr. Grisilli. And I think we've probably all had the experience, it's not possible to walk around San Carlos and talk to people without the question of line 147 come up, coming up. And it's, it always involves ultimately, is it safe? Should I be worried? How much should I be worried if I should be worried? And effectively, where we are, we aren't really answering that question for the community. And I think we need to come up with an answer which probably is going to evolve over time as we learn more, hopefully eventually get resolved and put to bed. But I think we need to have an answer for that. We need to be able to explain to people as best we can. We need to be able to explain to people as best we can what the situation is. I have my own way of doing that, which I won't even go into here because I don't know if it meets all of the technical details that staff is aware of. I'm sure Mr. Grokod has an answer that he gives people when they ask him that question as well. But we ought to have an approach or a description that we put out there. So I would really like to see staff put something like that together.
Can I jump on that, Mr. Rubens?
Mr. Grokod first, or Mr. Collins?
One of the things that I saw work real well with my wife and my son when he was sick with the flu was, this fascinated me as a father, you know, never had been a father before. But, you know, I'd had Daniel in my truck when the sickness was coming on, and he's like, "Dad, my chest hurts and everything." And I'm like, you know, don't know what to do. But I get him home, and Viv says, "Well, on a scale of 1 to 10, how much does it hurt?" Great question, right? And I think that's kind of what, when I'm meeting with my clients and they bring this up, even something like that would be helpful. On a scale of 1 to 5, where do we sit? Are we really dangerous and we should be acting more diligently on this issue? Or, well, PG&E has given us some assurances, we feel kind of not great about it, but okay, so we're on a, you know, we're at a 3? I mean, Mark, to your thing, I probably have an answer? No, that's my point, I have no answer.
I don't think, through the chair, I don't think there is an answer. I mean, we don't know, that's the thing, that's the problem. And so you have, that's why we're going through this process. If we knew, you know, like I said, we'd be standing there going, "You've got to be kidding me." But I don't think we have an answer, and it'd be great to have one, but I don't think we do.
If I may. Actually, pardon me, Mr. Rubens, Mr. Collins, you were going to make a comment, then I have something on that. No, that's right, that's called discussion. It's okay.
What I was going to say is, I really like the idea of an area on our city website, an FAQ, call it what you will, but, and I think it could be made up of, you know, what's the issue? What's the timeline? What's the history of the issue? Could just be brief bullet points, who the players are, and explaining the complexity of this. You've got the PUC, you've got PG&E, you have us as a city, and then what the next steps are. So that people know that they can come back from time to time and visit the website and get the latest updates. And might be a good way for them to sign up for e-notify so that they, you know, if there's new information, that they can get that information in a timely fashion. And I think that type of thing would be very helpful, particularly in a situation such as Mr. Grokod runs into, because you meet with a lot of residents of our town as part of your job. And when they come, it'd be very easy to say, "Well, let's go online and check it out." Or when you have an opportunity, there's going to be a lot of answers to those things. Plus, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm going to read it. I mean, I get a lot of emails all the time, and we're all fortunate to get those emails that you send us and Mr. Malpe sends us, but the public doesn't necessarily get those. But to put that information out there and then through the use of a mailer, tell people, this stuff's on our website too, by the way. If you lose this letter and you're having a discussion, you need to know more, here's where you can go to get the information, and we will update it on a timely basis. I don't know how much staff time is involved with that, but I think it would be incredibly worthwhile. It really bothers me to find out that someone, because of fear of this line exploding, is moving out of town. That perception may be real or not real, but it doesn't really matter, it's a perception, and you can't quantify how real that danger is unless we really know what's going on. And that's the frustration, I think, that we're all dealing with, is that we can't tell people exactly what the problem is because of all these issues that we're dealing with.
Which, as, I agree completely with Mr. Gasilli's comment, the reality is that we don't know. And of course, that, of course, is the fundamental argument that we wish the PUC had adopted, it truly put safety first and said, "Hey, if you don't know, be very cautious." And fundamentally, what happened is the PUC basically said, "Ah, we don't know what's going on, but business as usual." And that's not acceptable to me. It sounds like, from the sounds I'm hearing, it's not acceptable to anybody else here. You know, broadly speaking, I think one of the things that we need to perhaps revisit, we had a multi-pronged strategy of prosecuting this last fall, which started with the declaration of emergency when we first learned about this, dropped on Mr. Malpe's desk out of the blue. And there were legal components to it, there were, for lack of a better term, media and political components to it, and I don't use those words in any disparaging sense. We were trying to put pressure on a political system, the PUC, to protect us, to protect our community. Most recently, because of the decision from the PUC, we have rightfully focused on what are the next legal steps, in which, as Mr. Rubens, you and I have talked about, the PUC didn't do us a favor there by leaving the item open for appeal because basically it means we have to spend a lot of time going through the PUC, asking them to reconsider their decision before we can try and get in front of, hopefully, a more objective institution, a court someplace that would listen to our arguments. But it seems to me that we need to perhaps revisit and re-energize the other prong of the strategy, which is the media-political side of things, okay? And so, you know, that covers a lot of ground, there are a lot of things that Mr. Malpe can do directly, there's a lot of things that individual council members can do, we can even, once, I think we should be using our citizenry as a resource. I think part of this education campaign ought to be, here's who you can write to or call or email and complain about the way you've been treated, and about you don't like the fact that you don't know whether you should move out of San Carlos or not, okay? We shouldn't be the ones, I don't object to us hearing it, I am disturbed like you are that somebody's actually moving out of town as a result of that. But that energy needs to be focused on the PUC, okay? And maybe PG&E also, but primarily on the PUC. And we need to figure out a way to channel that, to respark that and channel it, okay? And that's something I think staff's going to have to take a lead on. So I would hope when this comes back that you can start doing things and then share some suggestions with us on how to do that. I also want to mention to my colleagues that something that came up in discussions with, that I had with Mr. Rubens and Mr. Malpe, it's always disturbed me that this infamous email string occurred in November of 2012, it was actually provided to the PUC in March of 2013. And the next thing, the first time we heard about it was in September of 2013 when PG&E said, "Oh, by the way, you might be interested in this, we think our reporters got it." I want to know what a public agency, a state agency, whose primary mission is the safety of the residents of California when it comes to pipelines, what they were doing with that information for six months? I really want to know that. And so I had suggested to Mr. Rubens and Mr. Malpe that somebody, whether it's me, and I think we decided that Mr. Malpe, you could send it out more quickly because it wouldn't require council action, to do a Public Records Act request for the PUC and say, "We want everything associated with this email string. I'd like to know what happened. Did it just die on the vine someplace where there were discussions that went back and forth where nobody bothered to tell us?" I really want to know. Because, you know, we have to have accountability, and none of us are exempt from accountability. We certainly aren't, and I don't see why the PUC should be. Another thing I just will mention to my colleagues, I ran into, I don't remember her last name, Irene, the councilwoman from San Bruno.
Irene O'Connell.
Irene O'Connell. As you might imagine, San Bruno is even more sensitive to all these issues than we are. They are actually circulating a petition where they're going to be looking for public officials to sign on to urge the PUC and actually the governor to take, to force the PUC to take certain actions to correct deficiencies in the PUC. So I would certainly recommend you keep your eye out for that, and if you can see your way to signing it, that you consider doing that. Let's see, there was another thing too. I'm sorry, there's just so many things. The situation bothers me on so many levels that it just, it tend to, the ideas tend to kind of tumble together. Mr. Malpe, where do we stand on the council's desire to have Chris Johns come down and meet with us?
Who's Chris Johns?
Oh, sorry, Chris Johns is the CEO of, President, pardon me, of PG&E. That was something that we discussed at the last council meeting, inviting him to come talk to us because he is ultimately responsible for safety in San Carlos on the PG&E side, and we are clearly responsible for public safety in San Carlos as well. We wanted to have a dialogue with him.
We're putting together that request in writing for Mr. Johns' office, and I imagine it'll be one of the topics of discussion when you and I have lunch with him. Is it next week or the week after? What's that? February 25th, so, in about a month.
Okay. I remembered the last item, last item for now, I forgot about this. I don't know if my colleagues caught this in their news clipping services, if you use one. One of the PUC commissioners, Mr. Mark Ferrin, is resigning, in fact, he has resigned already. So there is an opening on the PUC which Governor Brown needs to fill. I have no idea what the timetable on that is, he probably has some flexibility in that. I intend to express my personal desire through some communication with, to the governor's office, I'll do it as myself, not as mayor, that I really want to see the governor appoint somebody to the PUC who really will put safety first. Because I personally do not believe that safety is really job number one at the PUC, and that needs to change. And I mention it to my colleagues because that, you may wish to weigh in on that as well, through either direct channels or indirect channels or what. Mr. Grokod?
I don't think we can have a discussion on this, but it's just an informational item, but, well, I'll put it this way, something I would like to get off my chest is, and the reason I asked the question about the fine versus, what's the other thing you called it? A penalty? It really bothers me that the CPUC seems to look at this, and I would put the governor in this boat too, sees this as an opportunity to bolster the general fund at the expense of PG&E, because who ends up paying that is the ratepayer. Meanwhile ...
The ratepayers don't pay the, the ratepayers would pay a penalty, but not the fine. The shareholders would pay the fine that goes to the general fund.
Well, that's accounting, is all that is.
Well, it could be.
So, but still, the issue for me remains that the state benefits with their general fund, the governor who appoints these people to the PUC, it seems like a rather opportunistic event. Meanwhile, where PG&E really should be spending its money, instead of on a fine, is on line 147, and making our community safe. And I am really going to be flabbergasted if money goes forward to the state before anything is done to the line in San Carlos. That would be criminally wrong in my book, so.
Well, especially since the cost of replacing the unknown segments of line 147, I think, is south of the fine.
Much south of the fine, I would think, yes.
I just wanted to, in response to the comments that Councilmember Grokod made and some of the other council members, that right now, the jurisdiction over line 147 is at the CPUC, they have jurisdiction over line safety, that's why we filed the request for the rehearing. We still have our request for reimbursement that has not been heard at all by the administrative law judge or even reached the commission. So we have that request also in play to reimburse us for our costs and attorney's fees, which are substantial. I mean, they are substantial at this point in time. And so that, we are working on that to try and address the cost to the city, because this was thrust upon us as we've put in our papers, it's not something we sought out. The other thing about the safety of the line, and our public works director could correct me if I don't have this quite right, but I think we're dealing about margins of safety here on the pressurization of the line. We, San Carlos, our experts all believe that the pressure of the line, the safe and most conservative pressure for the line is 240 PSI, based upon the information that we know. And that's because there's about a mile of the line that's unknown and it's pre-1970 pipe. The CPUC is relying on a pressure test that was conducted in 2011, and as I stated earlier, we believe erroneously applying a state rule and a prior ruling by the CPUC as opposed to the mandatory federal regulations in assessing the pressure on the line. So it's a matter of degree, how conservative are you being when you look at the line? So we are saying, in San Carlos and other agencies that support us that are at the CPUC, say the most conservative standard is the standard you should apply to line 147 because we have so much on the line that is of unknown materials. And the CPUC has chosen, again, we believe erroneously, to apply a different standard that is not as safe because it's less conservative. And because we want to be assured, we've asked for the line to be inspected internally, PG&E hasn't scheduled that to be done until, is it 2016?
2016 was the last date I had from PG&E.
So we aren't really going to know what the material of the line is until 2016 because they won't be able to inspect it. So therefore, we say the most appropriate standard is the most conservative standard based upon federal regulations. Does that mean that 330, there's an imminent threat? It's, I think it's a likelihood scenario, not a, it's going to happen scenario, it's, we want the most conservative standard until they know exactly what the line's made of. Because once they know what the line is made of, then the pressure test has a lot more validity. Right now, we feel that the pressure test alone cannot be used to set the pressure on the line with unknown segments.
So have we tried to make that case directly with PG&E instead of going through the PUC?
We have.
And the reaction?
We've asked PG&E engineers to move the pigability of the line, the internal inspection of the line, forward because there's one segment in the middle of the line where the turns are too sharp for the internal inspection to occur. We don't know if there's different technologies that could be used. We've actually asked, well, can you pig the line from one direction and pig the line from the other direction so you can get, so we can limit the amount of the line that's unknown segment, and they've refused to do that.
But regarding the pressure, has there been any discussion or try at negotiation on the pressure directly with PG&E?
Yeah.
There have been some discussions before December 19.
And during. The engineers have had those discussions throughout the process. You know, I think the point you made earlier, council member, and that the mayor made as well, in a different way, is really how I see it. You know, we've seen PG&E spend, you know, millions of dollars in terms of paying fines on hiding the ball. We've seen them spend an untold amount of money on a statewide marketing campaign to tell us how safe they are in our community. We've seen their stock prices get hammered. We've gotten letters from them about how much they've done on the line in the past, and we've gotten absolutely nothing, zero, on what they can do to change the known deficiencies and unknown characteristics of the line moving forward. They haven't changed their timeframe one iota, they've gotten letters from Congresswoman Jackie Speer on our behalf, asking them to move up the timetable on pigging the line. They've gotten letters from Assemblymember Mullen, State Senator Jerry Hill, we've had the governor's office involved. I mean, it is, in my experience, the worst case of customer service and serving a community and trying to proactively solve a problem. The last thing we want to do is be in front of the CPUC or in the court when we think all along, our first, our first instinct was to contact PG&E and try to work it out with them directly, and we got absolutely nowhere. The senior vice president in charge of gas operations told me, "Don't call PG&E, call the CPUC next time."
Well, if I could request, then, I think it would be appropriate for the issue to be put on the dais with ... be put on the dais with, you know, whereas statements and therefore, and we make a statement to PG&E that, for instance, you know, you could have a couple of things about pigging the line earlier, and maybe from two directions, however you want to word it, we can take a look at it and then discuss it. Mention the 240 pressure, something that, you know, we as a council can speak up and on behalf of our community and say, this is what we would like to see. And then we send that to PG&E.
Any objections to that? I like that idea.
Not at all.
Mr. Collins, you had one of the
I just wanted to, something sort of crystallized in my mind. The maximum allowable operating pressure on this line, as I remember it, is 330 pounds per square inch. Is that right?
Correct.
And PG&E has elected to run that much pressure through the line. Is that right?
That's, that's our understanding.
So they're running the maximum they can through a line that is, whose condition we have no idea what, whether or not it's sound or not. So they're sort of pushing it up to the limit. I mean, they could run it at 240, yes, like we'd like to see. They could even run it at 300. But it's been their decision on an uncertain line to run the pressure at its maximum. At some point along the line, I think that needs to be made loud and clear to the governor and the CPUC and anyone else who will listen. To me, that's just, it's not acceptable.
Any other comments? Mr. Malpe, Mr. Rubens, you've got, we had a lot of discussion here and a lot of different ideas. You're reasonably clear about what we're asking you to do. I will attempt to summarize it, well, I won't try and summarize it, I'll just sort of say, my sense is, you have five elected officials who are legitimately very concerned about where this thing stands. And if I can borrow a football metaphor, I want the ball on their side of the field. I don't want it on our side of the field, okay? Figure out how to do that. Okay. And make sure you bring your playbook out when you go on the field, you know, strap that to your arm really securely. Don't call a timeout to have to go back and get that. That just looks very amateur. All right. Next item, which is the last one for tonight, consideration of amending appointments to the city council subcommittees and ad hoc committees for 2014. We are revisiting this just so everybody's aware of it, because I was unaware that I ran into some constraints that Mr. Grocott had in terms of scheduling. So we tinkered with the schedule a little bit, and the assignment list, and if it's acceptable to folks, I will entertain a motion if we wish to, actually, entertain a motion if we want to discuss it as well, since.
I make a motion that we amend the appointments to the city council subcommittees and the ad hoc committees for 2014.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
To the airport roundtable.
They told me you wanted that.
Fits my schedule better. I didn't actually want it.
Yeah, that was the wrong word.
It's okay.
Thank you. I appreciate your flexibility on that. Ms. Moy, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes.
I just have a question, and it's not really in here, but I just want to make sure. So I'm on the BPAC, the C-KAG BPAC, and that's not shown here, which is fine, but I just want to make sure it's the pleasure of the council that I continue to serve on BPAC.
Yes, it is. And I apologize, it was supposed to be there. Maybe it got cut off. We'll
I believe the BPAC is that an appointed by
By BPAC.
Yeah.
By C-KAG, really.
So these are just appointments by the council.
Right, yeah.
Oh, that's right. I did not include the ones like C-MEC where I'm on. But yes, it is certainly our pleasure you continue to represent us on that. And if, one last observation about this, I would ask anybody who is either the new or the former lead on an assignment, if you could please notify the relevant JPA, if it's a JPA, about the changes in what's happened. Or Ms. Moy, have you done that?
We are in the process of doing that.
You're in the process of doing that? Okay, that's fine. There's probably some things crossed in the mail for me, so.
So I would like a, just a little applause here, because I made it through the whole meeting with my iPad, no problems, and I was able to follow the agenda and take notes and everything. And Mr. Grisilli was watching. I think he's impressed.
I do think, I do think some recognition is in order. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I would ask that you consider providing some tutorial lessons for Mr. Grisilli.
Well, I think that, you know, in all fairness, I mean, I should be applauded for the fact that I got through the whole meeting with paper.
All right, there we go. We'll applaud that, too. We never have enough applause. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.